Before we begin.
Leslie Hervey, interim clerk.
Hamilton County Commissioner Alicia Reese.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Aluto, county administrator.
Thank you all. Stephanie Sumerodum is president of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners. We'll begin as we always do with a silent prayer and then if you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Amen.
I quietly witness to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make a motion to approve amendments of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Sumerodum.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comments either on Zoom or anything?
Yeah, we have one more comment.
Okay. Hello, Ms. Davis. Okay, can you hear us, Ms. Davis? Carrie?
Okay, I can hear you now.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome.
Okay, first I wanted to give you a little bit of an update on the actions you took on December 16th regarding rules. Since then, I have been contacted by advocacy groups or their legal representation from three different states across the country who have heard about the actions you took and are trying to emulate the work that was done in Hamilton County. Those three states were Pennsylvania, Maryland, and California. So it's, as I predicted, this is very progressive work that you all did and it will not only impact Hamilton County. This, what you did will spread across the state and is already spreading across the country. So I just wanted to share that with you. I also wanted to share with you that all of us in the public sector, all the nonprofits and citizen groups, we, we meet and we talk and we uniformly feel at this juncture that we are being left out of the process as this moves forward. Our questions aren't being answered. Things we want talked about at the meetings are not being addressed. And so next week, I'm hoping to bring a proposal to you all, asking you to form a public involvement committee under the commissioners so that we have a mechanism by which we can actually get answers, have some issues put on the agenda of the meeting and be a party to the progress that we are making and the direction it is going in. I want to remind you that for over six months, I came before the Board of Commissioners trying to talk about this issue and it was really hard to get our foot in the door. And thank you to each one of you and particularly Ms. Treehouse and her leadership on this. We were just very lucky that the citizens were heard and this great initiative that has been undertaken that came directly from the public, not from within the committee, not from within government, not from the staff. This was a citizen-led initiative and we need to be included in the process. So I wanted to thank you. Lots of people are thanking you all over the place for taking the actions you took and to let you know that at this juncture, we feel we are being shut out and we will be proposing some type of mechanism at your next meeting that to continue to keep us involved in this process.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
We have Iris Rowley is on for public comments. Welcome, Ms. Rowley.
Thank you so very much. Thank you to the President of the Commission. I'm trying to see, do I, how do I show my face or is it just my photo? Oh, you're not able to show your face? Okay. All right, thank you. I'm calling today and I'm calling about something that we all should be extremely very well aware of in our county and our city and our state and even in our country. And I'm calling to speak about the new tourism opportunity that will be happening in the city of Cincinnati as it relates to the building of a new tourism hotel in a parking lot. I'm calling more specifically to talk to you all about the level of inclusion. We know that you're embarking upon a report from the county on the state of disparity as well as the city. And I know that you're going to vote today on the city resolution in giving 3CDC oversight of this project. But I want to caution us, and I want to caution us because each and every time we get to this juncture in the road, we continue to do the same thing and we get the same results. That is not working for portions of populations of people who have historically been left out of the process, who've been blocked out of the process, who've been, you know, just kept out. It is not the right or the very fair thing to do. We just came off of the commemoration of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and all of the works and everybody has been running around using very select quotes. I was the keynote speaker at the citywide MLK commemorative celebration at Music Hall. And the gist of my comments was stop tiptoeing around the very hard issues that plague us today, that if Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was still alive, he would be marching right now on these issues. We know that the spend with minority-owned business from the county has not been good at all. If you gave it a report, it would be an F minus. We know that the report from-
Mrs. Rowley, sorry to interject. You have two minutes to comment. So if you could summarize.
Yes, and we know that, thank you for that, President. And we know that the totality, totality of the, the total of what 3CDC has spent with minority-owned businesses, that would get a F as well. We're asking, I am board chair of the Cincinnati Economic Advancement Initiative. I, I chaired two committees with the NAACP. I am a business owner of 21 years, a mother, and the creator of what all of you all tout as a national model on police reform. Let's begin the, let's begin the process of reforming how we do business with black-owned and minority-owned businesses in this county. Let's not rush this process. Let's give it the full vetting and airing that it needs. Thank you for hearing me today.
Thank you for commenting. Just to clarify, we are, we are not taking a vote today. We will present a resolution to each of my colleagues to discuss on Tuesday, which is our staff meeting on Tuesday, and put it up for a vote on Thursday if the board decides to do that. And I just wanted to make it very clear that 3CDC will not be the developer on this initiative, but only the one to spur, if the commission decides to do so, to spur moving the development on as we look forward to major projects that are coming like FIFA 2026, things like that, to get it off the ground. If the board decides to do that, but there's no vote today. A resolution will be presented. The city of Cincinnati is also looking at it and will be taking a look at it. And if we decide not to go that way, then it won't happen. But I certainly appreciate your comments.
Thank you for the clarity.
We have Joe Mallory is here.
Madam President, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Joe Mallory. I'm the president of the Cincinnati NAACP. And I read that article. It's a coincidence that Iris is calling in. But I read the article in the Inquirer about the development for the Convention Center district that they're going to be working on, the 3CDC may be involved. A lot has been happening with development and I'm glad you said that the vote is not going to be held today, that you're going to do a resolution because typically we find out after the fact. You know, newspaper reporters, everybody else, they find out about what's going on. They put it out there and they, they kind of give you little pieces of it. But, you know, I'm glad that you haven't had the vote yet. We get a chance to weigh in on the front end. And more specifically, my concern is, and I've had the same concern as I got more involved, is what is the spend for black companies and black contractors in Hamilton County? You know, I know they created this commission. I don't know what the name of it is. It's supposed to be diversity and inclusion. But the numbers in my mind hasn't changed much higher than what it was when other folks were in control down here. So, and I understand that the city doesn't have the capacity to do this development and they had to have someone outside to do it. But when it comes to these kind of opportunities, you know, there needs to be an intentional plan for inclusiveness, you know, as it relates to, you know, black contractors or business owners. And the NAACP has had two national conventions here in Cincinnati, 2008, 2016. The black music festivals here every year, you know, pandemic, you know, notwithstanding, they couldn't do it then. But whenever it comes here, you know, they have a spin, you know, the economic impact for Hamilton County in this area, this region is, has been stated as over $100 million. So I'm trying to see what the spend is when it comes to what is being for African-Americans. Also, the Port Authority, they had a lawsuit with the Millennium Development and the county was on the hook for paying $5 million for this lawsuit. I don't understand why the taxpayers had to be on the hook. But when it comes to the land bank and the Port Authority, I would like to see if I can get to the Cincinnati NAACP email, email a inventory of properties that's owned by the Port Authority. They get first dibs on anything that's available. And when it comes to foreclosures and things like that, they get first dibs.
Let me interject because you're representing an organization.
Yeah.
I will give you a few more minutes.
Okay, so I want an inventory of the properties because when it comes to opportunities for blacks, you know, they get boxed out. And I've looked at Swift and Common sitting vacant for 10 years. And what that does, it declines the neighborhood. It drives down property values. You know, people think that it's blighted and then others come in and they buy it that gentrifies that community. And that's been happening all over this county. And I just want more opportunities for blacks and that's why I'm here speaking today. So I want it to be more intentional and we have to get these numbers of the spend of taxpayers' dollars because African-Americans represent a lot of taxpayers in this county and I think that they should have their fair share of the spend. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. And I can say everyone on this board knows that we need to increase our level of inclusion and diversity. It's been too long. We're not where we need to be, far away from where we need to be. And so we are trying to make sure that it is intentional and we have lots more work to do. Any information that you need, Joe, as far as your organization that would provide some clarity, I'm sure our administrator will provide that for you. Did anyone else want to make any comments?
I just wanted to, you said, you said there's a resolution.
We haven't submitted the resolution to you yet.
Oh, okay.
To you or any of the boards.
Okay.
You will be getting it in time enough to have a full discussion on Tuesday as it relates to-
Okay. Well, can I say something about the, or do you have a resolution you're introducing today?
No, I'm not introducing-
Okay, you said, okay, got it. Um, yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I read the article as well. There was an article came out, for those who may not be aware. There was an article that came out saying basically that there would be a new convention district in downtown Cincinnati where the old Millennium Hotel was across the street where the parking lot is and the Convention Center. And it said that the, I believe, city council was moving forward with something and then the county obviously would be someone that has, we have to both agree on it. And, and I did get a lot of calls because I was not in the article quoted at all, which is fine. But I want to be on the record so people know where I am and a lot of people had called me because I come from the tourism background. That's, I have expertise in that. I was the deputy director of tourism for the state of Ohio. I brought in conventions like the NAACP, like the Shriners Convention, like the National Baptist Convention and many others. And then at the state, I worked to help those conventions get funding, et cetera. I also was a part of helping to put together the CFA, which is the Convention Facility Authority, which now has money. That's where the hotel tax goes, the city's portion and the county's portion. And we had to do that in order to expand the Convention Center and I was a part of that. And that's a tough thing to do and it was a tough thing for us to do. With all of that being said, when I first had gotten news about 3CDC being the, the word they told me was quarterback, quarterbacking this project. I had some concerns. Obviously, you know, I hear a lot about the World Cup and I have been continuously asking. We wouldn't have it as a board, but I've been continuously asking because when you're in the tourism business, when something is being pitched, they have what they call a bid package. And to this day, I still haven't seen the bid package. And then the bid package tells you what do you have to do to get this convention or event? How much money you have to spend? What is it going to cost you? And then what, then you offset that or what will be brought in? And I've asked a number of questions and I'm still waiting to hear about that. We need a convention hotel, not just for the World Cup. World Cup may come one time. We need a convention hotel because as COVID and all this hopefully dies down, we gotta, we have to have this in order to get conventions. We couldn't get a NAACP convention without this. We couldn't get a Shriners Convention. Right now, the Shriners, Prince Al Shriners are holding up right now because we don't have a convention hotel and other areas are eating us for lunch. So yes, we do need a convention hotel, but we have to do this properly. And what I saw in this initial proposal was that 3CDC would come in and they don't, and I, and I know a bit about them because when I was at the city, we helped bring 3CDC in. They started with Fountain Square. And then they went from Fountain Square and then they said, we're going to take the parking of Fountain Square. Then they're going to be over what comes on Fountain Square. Then they can go and have sponsorships on top of Fountain Square. Then they went to Over the Rhine and they were able to do some good things, but there is some gentrification. I don't see the black ownership of buildings in Over the Rhine. That's what I'm hearing from people. Then they said, give us Washington Park. We, we did $100 million, I believe, in tax credits at the state. They took Washington Park, then they took the parking underneath. Court Street, where we have our building right now. They got half of Court Street from Kroger's all the way to where our building is. And they've got Macy's, the old Macy's. They're doing that across the street from Fountain Square. So if we do this convention district, they'll have the entire street from Fountain Square all the way to the convention. So the question becomes this, usually when we have big things like this, we usually say, let's do a national search. When there's a job, go, we got to do a national search. We got to find who is the best. And I kind of think that's the direction that we should go with this. Is there, I mean, if they're the best, fine, but is there something else out there? But the other things that was brought up in the two speakers, I just wanted to highlight that I, I guess caught my attention is that you have the African-American conventions or the biggest conventions that we've brought in. So they're bringing in money. You then have the music festival, which is the largest economic impact yearly and they're brought in. But then when I saw the paperwork, African-Americans are not at the table. They're not a part of this. And that kind of worries me. So I don't want us to do what we've been doing. I'm not saying that, I haven't seen the resolution as being introduced. I did see the city council resolution. The, the words like community benefits, we show that that does not work. With FC, they did a community benefits and you had the community, they got some t-shirts and footballs. I mean, t-shirts, some soccer balls and those kinds of things. But they don't have anything permanent. It's over. You get 15% maybe in the construction. And then after that, it's over. It's like us. We got stadiums and the 15% is gone. We're no longer involved. So we want to do a little bit differently. Hopefully, the, the inclusion is on the front end, not the back end. There's a partnership on the front end and the people that's bringing in the money, the convention, should be at the table. So you're absolutely right, Joe, you standing there, it brought that to my attention. At the NAACP, it should be not, we're going to just talk to you and hear what you got to say. It needs to be a joint partnership. And I'm hopeful that we can get to that. So I just wanted to, I haven't seen a resolution yet, so I don't know what's in there. But I look forward to conversation, but I wanted people to know because it wasn't a newspaper. And so people ask me, I didn't hear from you. What do you got to say about it? Those are the issues. Community benefits agreements, that's not going to get me excited. We tried that. It has not worked. 15%, we already know. That has not worked. Let's have a joint partnership, joint venture from the decision-making table on the front end all the way down. And I think if we do that, it'll be something that'll bring more money. It'll be a model. It'll be something that, a new way of us doing business as we go into 2022. So thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say that because some people had asked me about the, the article and I, I think I definitely needed to articulate my position. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Treehouse.
On this issue, Madam President, my understanding is we're going to have a discussion on Tuesday at our staff meeting related to what I think is also a very important issue where we try to coordinate the activity around the Convention Center, which has been stalled for many years. And I am looking forward to a coordinated effort where everyone has an opportunity to participate. But I will weigh in on Tuesday when we have our larger discussion on the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to summarize, as you were saying, the city of Cincinnati passed a resolution for 3CDC. My understanding, what we're going to do is kind of take a look at their resolution to try to partner and coordinate and make sure we're in the same, we're thinking the same way as it relates to how the county wants to proceed. So basically, take a look at that resolution and revise it, update it as it relates to the county. And then you, both of you will have it to give any updates or any changes that you think need to, need to happen. And just make it very clear that when we use 3CDC and whatever area we use and whatever part of the city, they don't take over any ownership or any, we don't give away any of our property. So that's not happening, but I will make sure that you get that resolution as we reform it to fit our needs as a county. So that's all I have to say as it relates to that. We can move forward. And as we talked about FC, Vice President Reese, if you'd like to probably get a report, maybe we can make sure you get a report. Administration can, as it relates to what involvement they've actually had in the community that Jeff Byrdin will probably be able to, to present as it relates to soccer, youth soccer and the amount of people in the West End that are working in the FC stadium. So there are some things that he could speak to, Jeff Byrdin could speak to better than I could, that might be helpful as for us inclusion. We, as I said, we can always do more, no matter what the project is.
Madam President? Thank, thank you for that. And I have talked to Jeff Byrdin, good friend. I think the mindset that I'm on now is not necessarily the community outreach. I'm interested now, we're now moving to the business model. I think a lot of times, and I've said this, we had a, I guess, a Zoom with Byrdin and 3CDC about this convention piece. And my concern was the business model, even on the banks before we got here as a board. And I think we have corrected some things that we're correcting still things. Before we got here, there were contracts on the banks that don't have expiration dates. So even with the building of the Black Music Walk of Fame and we want to have inclusion, we only can kind of be around the edges on it because there is someone who's over it, who has a lifetime contract. And I had brought that up before. So as we go forward, I'm not, I don't want to support any lifetime contracts. I don't want this 3CDC just have, when I looked at the scope of work that was presented to, to each of us just as a draft, they would have this forever. I don't want no more lifetime contracts. And I want to talk business versus community. Community is the foundational things. You 501(c)(3) is foundation, help the community. That's wonderful. We're now talking about a business agreement. We're talking about taxpayer money. We're talking about who's going to be in charge. We're talking about who's going to get not just limited contracts, who's going to be in control, who's going to decide who gets what. And usually, really, people elected us to make those decisions and I'm not real big about giving that away because at least the taxpayers can, they don't like us, they can deal with us. But we've been given too much power, and I'm not saying we, it's just us three, even elected officials, whether it's city council, whatever, we give too much power to non-elected bodies. These quote unquote quasi-government nonprofits that have boards that we don't even appoint to, don't even know who they are, can't, there is no recourse. If you don't, if you go down the wrong way, we can't do anything about it. So before I hand the keys, which I don't want to do, hand the keys over to somebody else because we got to face the people. We got to face folks if it doesn't necessarily go right. And so when I saw the scope of work, I started looking at the business terms. Coming from an entrepreneurial background and a family-owned business, I said, wait a minute, how do we have something that has no end date? How do we turn over something without any deadlines and measurables? And so I just want to put that out there. That's kind of the way I'm thinking. Now, the community thing, that's a whole nother separate conversation. We'll get back to you about what you did in the community and uniforms and some jobs. I'm talking about business deals. Who's at the top? Who's making those decisions? Who's at the table? Because when we bring these conventions, it's a business deal. When the NAACP came, we didn't come here and say, well, we doing this in the community. It was a business. How many hotel rooms? How much money will you bring? Of all of those kinds of things, it was a business conversation. So I'm excited about talking about this and seeing the resolution that you have forward. I haven't seen yours. But when I saw the city council one, it kind of did raise some concerns. So I hope- So I hope that we can strengthen it and, uh, come, you know, with a better deal.
Okay, thank you. And it, it's not my resolution, it'll be our resolution. But just, uh, for those that are watching as it relates to the hotel, I want to just provide some clarity that this is not for FIFA in 2026 coming. We need a signature hotel and that's what we're trying to do is build for whoever comes. So let's just, I just want to make sure that that's clear to those that are watching. I'm going to move forward with my comments. Um, I participated in a webinar this morning with Senator Brown to give an update on how we're using our ARP monies. He was very pleased. There were other commissioners that were on, Commissioner Drehouse was also on there with me. Uh, he's very happy about how we're moving forward and trying to get this money off the table. I would ask my colleagues to please get your names, uh, for recognition for Black History by, uh, the 24th, which is this Monday. Um, we're going to, you, um, can name three, um, black professionals or someone that's, um, has an impact on the community. Um, and so we will recognize on February the 3rd, uh, those people that you choose. Um, the tax levy review, uh, meeting was last night around, uh, at six o'clock. Commissioner Drehouse was also, you weren't there for that, were you?
No, I didn't make it.
I was on, on my lonely without you guys. So, but, uh, the review committee is because, um, they're looking at levies coming up. Indigent care levy, mental health and senior services. And that tax levy review committee is very thorough and they've been working very hard. We'll be presenting something to the board very soon, um, on those three areas. I've also, uh, been talking to Jeff as relates to before we did our, passed our budget about child support delinquencies, really concerned about those young men and women that owe child support that for whatever reason were laid off from their jobs and, uh, were not able to, um, provide the child support to the children that need it. Uh, but they are being penalized because they didn't pay. Of course, we want to make sure that all the children get what they need. But is there any way we can supplement, uh, or add on to whatever is owed to those children? Because they're not able to, they suffered through the COVID pandemic also. So we're looking at some creative ways to be able to help that, uh, to happen. I've talked to reentry and the possibility of maybe giving money to reentry where they can help those, uh, parents that, uh, have back delinquencies. And I was just on a webinar before I came in, uh, it's called the Green Light Fund. Uh, it was one of the greatest webinars I sat in. It's so, um, encouraging. It's a $4.6 million philanthropy program to identify gaps in literacy. And they will be hiring, um, up to 2,000, 2,000 black and brown young men, age 18 to 24 to be, uh, fellows, uh, in the classrooms, preschools. And so they will receive $15 an hour. This is a five-year program. And I wrote down the email. So if anyone want is interested in being a fellow, they call them, you can get on LiteracyLab.org. And, um, there are lots of partners that they have that have really, uh, given money to make sure that this happens. As I said, it's a $4.6 million program. Right now it's right in Cincinnati and I'm going to, uh, you were also on that, I think. And, um, um, we're going to try to see if they can expand that, uh, to the outskirts of Cincinnati. But right now they're working right here in Cincinnati and it's a great thing. Really excited about the young men. There, as they interview the young men, they're going to see the ones, uh, that may be interested in education or maybe they were not, but they can at least, uh, get their feet wet in there and mentor. They, the young people will able, will be able to see people that look like them, uh, and be a part of that whole experience. Lastly, um, we said it on Tuesday, but, um, I was invited down to the Bengals stadium and because we won the playoff. So those who didn't watch on Tuesday, Bishop, if you could bring, uh, the ball up so, uh, everyone can see what we received from the Bengals. Hey, are you running with it? Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw it to, to Joe out there. So yeah, so, uh, you, you should have seen all of us, all, uh, the commissioners. We were passing the ball or throwing the ball around and doing poses and stuff. This is, uh, unique to Cincinnati. Of course, Hamilton County, I'm glad they recognized Hamilton County because there are 520,000 more people that live out, uh, that don't live in Cincinnati. Um, so they gave us this, this will be on display. And, uh, as soon as we can sec- secure it the best we can, uh, and in a wall somewhere, maybe not in a case, but, uh, because I want our residents to either, I don't know if they'll be able to handle it. I mean, throw it and pick it up and unless we have an armed guard or something. But, but anyway, I want them to, because this is theirs. This is the taxpayers' ball and, and their effort and the fans. So I just wanted to really just show it again for those who didn't see it. I know I see you waiting for a pass again. You want to touch it one more time, but anyway. So anyway, I'm very, very proud of that. And, um, because people often think, uh, you know, it's just Cincinnati, but we got all these people in all these different areas that are so supportive. So that's all I have. Um, right now we had, um, a report from Greg Kesterman on the COVID-19 and maybe, uh, Commissioner Drehouse, she had also a briefing on that. But, um, the numbers are, are not as bad, but they're still not where we want them to be. And so we just still, uh, oh, we had a COVID clinic here, uh, on the 19th down in, uh, the lobby. Um, and I'm not sure, uh, we have to get the facts from Kesterman on how many people came and, and, uh, demographics of who came. So we'll be talking about that at our next meeting. So that's all I have. Vice President Reese.
Uh, thank you. And, uh, I got in trouble. My, my niece, she thinks we're really cool, by the way, now that we, now that we had a football toss. She plays, uh, uh, flag football and it's quarterback. So she's, she saw that ball being tossed and she says, you guys do some cool stuff down there. So the 12-year-old approve of us now. Um, just want to also say, uh, Hoot Day. I, 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 I just, I feel we going to win this one too. And, uh, beat out, uh, beat out Tennessee. And, um, I, I just, I've got a good feeling, a good feeling. So just, uh, good luck to our Cincinnati Bengals, uh, who'll be on the road playing against the Tennessee Titans. And, um, you know, we might have another ball coming in here tomorrow. We might have to get our kind of cases when we get done with this. Uh, so I just want to say, uh, congratulations and also good luck to, um, the whole Bengal team and administration. And, um, I liked the, I saw Joe Burrow throwing and we looking good. And Jamar is ready, Chase, he's ready to do it. So I think we're going to do, I really do. And I just want to say, uh, good luck. And we'll be cheering the Bengals on. Also want to, uh, acknowledge that Bootsy Collins, everybody's getting in on this. I mean, this is, I mean, Iggy Woods and Shuffle, I got a chance to do a Shuffle here. But the Iggy Wood Shuffle is back. Uh, Bootsy Collins, who is the founding inductee of our Black Music Walk of Fame. Uh, they just, uh, are releasing a new video, uh, remake of this video, uh, that'll be coming out today. So, um, just real excited about that. I want to encourage everybody to wear orange again. It, it worked. Put on your orange starting tomorrow, um, through the weekend. It worked. Put on your orange. I know they're going to be wearing black, but we going to keep our orange on too because it gave us good luck. Uh, want to also say, um, and staying in Tennessee, I did have a very good, uh, Zoom meeting with the president and CEO of the National African-American Music Museum that is in Nashville and got a chance to tell him about what we're doing up here with the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame and how we might be able to, you know, work together. And he was very excited to hear about what we were doing here. Um, and so I'm excited to get a chance to visit there and then have him come here and visit what we're doing here. So, uh, that was, uh, very good. I told him we can be friends today. Uh, but starting, uh, Saturday morning, we're, we're not friends until Sunday. So, uh, but I do want to acknowledge that was a very, very good meeting. Also last night I got a chance to, I was invited to speak to a group, uh, of, uh, taxpayers on the west side of town. And, um, I had a chance to go to White Oak and speak with them about what we're doing here, uh, in the county and also talk to them. They got a chance to get the report to the people. And I just want to thank them for, for the invitation, uh, to be out in green township, uh, last night. Really appreciated that. And, um, wanted to also, uh, acknowledge the Dr. Martin Luther King March. Um, I've never missed one. Uh, want to thank everybody that was there. Uh, uh, you saw Joe Mallory earlier, he's here. Uh, he, uh, NAACP were down there registering people to vote. And, uh, you know, we're still fighting for this right to vote and all that they're doing up in Washington. Um, and I've been heavily involved in the voting rights since being 18 years old, registering voters in the South when I was in college at Grambling State University. And, uh, and then asking for a voter bill of rights and to be in the constitution and getting 100,000 signatures, which I truly believe if we had done, we wouldn't be in this condition. Uh, but it's very sad that, uh, we're struggling to pass the John Lewis Voting Rights Act and, uh, certainly still calling again for getting that passed and moving, uh, that forward. Want to also acknowledge that, um, as it relates to testing, there are testing kits available. You could go online and order it from the US Post Office. And, uh, Edgar tried it out when it first came out and he got, he has like the next day. I was like, wow. Uh, next day mail came right in. So, um, I'm asking if we haven't done it already, they maybe have it on our website because a lot of people go to our 513relief.org. And if we could place it on there so people can just hit that link and they can order it. Doesn't cost you anything and, uh, it'll come right to your house, right to your house. You don't have to go out looking for it. And I, um, and Commissioner Kesterman has already warned us that we need to have these handy, don't wait until you have some symptoms. Have these test kits handy in the house. Um, and that would help a lot. So if we can, I'm just asking administration to look at putting that link on our 513 relief site if that is not, uh, already done. Um, and then also, um, Madam President asking, I talked to Administrator Ludo. Of course, I said it publicly, uh, and our new directors is here from Jaws of Family Services. Uh, you know, we have a backlog and some of the backlog, obviously with holidays. Um, some of it is because we had people that's been out, but we have a backlog. And one of the things we want to do is get that backlog down to almost nothing. So then we could take in more new people and get more funding out there. Uh, we've gotten a lot of calls, uh, 211. It, we, you know, we've got 211 hired to take some calls and for some reason it's been sent them off. They said 211 told me to call Commissioner Reese's office. I thought, wait a minute now. Um, but we've been able to help, but we got a back, a backlog. So, uh, we had asked for a 60-day plan that could be presented to us to say how to get this backlog done in 60 days with, you know, we've done, we've had other emergency issues that we've been able to bring staff together and get it kind of cleared out. And I think that would be good if we could, at one of our Tuesday meetings or staff meetings, possibly have at least presented so then people can watch and know that here's what we're trying to do with the backlog and here's, uh, what to do. So I would, um, ask if we could have some kind of presentation at some point, uh, as it relates to, as it relates to clearing out this backlog of people because they got the, you know, their, uh, rent, mortgage and the bill collectors, uh, are no longer on moratoriums. Uh, and they're calling people like crazy. So I just wanted to make sure of that. Um, my last thing deals with, uh, our HR. Uh, in our budget, we, uh, have for the first time a fellowship, an intern, paid internship program. And, um, I know we're kind of getting moving on it, but certainly with, I know college graduates are going to, I mean, college graduates are going to start, uh, applying, uh, people coming out, they're starting to apply. So just wanted to see if we could get, uh, some movement or get a report on where we are with that. I know it would be great that if each of us could have someone also in our offices, they get to see what we do, uh, as well. But I wanted to put that on the table as it relates to, um, HR. Um, and then also, uh, an idea that I told the administrator, administrator about, uh, we have an issue like everybody else as it relates to trying to get people working. And one of the things I was, um, wanted them to look into is looking at retirees that have already been trained or at at home and may want to get back in the mix, uh, on some of these things. And if there was something and it's a win-win for them, uh, because it doesn't affect their retirement, but we have somebody that has some experience that want to get back in it. And we see, uh, retirees all the time that have to go back to work unfortunately. Uh, and they're, you know, they're working at McDonald's and all these other places. We could use them if there's some retirees out there that want to come back and help us. Uh, I'd asked, uh, the administrator to possibly look at that as a possible option, not the only option, but a possible option, um, that retirees could come back and, and help out. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I just have a couple of things. Uh, one is a recognition of Paul Back, who was a Miami Township trustee, served in that community for 40 years, has retired from that position. So I just want to thank Paul for his many, many years of service, decades of service. Um, thank him for being a partner to the county commission and to the other communities in Hamilton County. Um, also I, I had the opportunity to represent the commission at the Warsaw Creative Campus ribbon cutting yesterday, a partnership with Price Hill Will and Model Management. Um, they are renovating 13 residential properties and seven commercial properties. It's all on Warsaw Avenue out in Price Hill, $10 million project. And, um, they're pretty excited about it. It's been a long time coming. And so I think it will really catalyze that business district and the residential area around it. The library just renovated, um, their asset there across the street. So there's a lot going on in the community and it was a very exciting ribbon cutting. Um, also, uh, wanted to pile on related to Martin Luther King Day. Uh, you know, the organizers of all the events here in Cincinnati, we are so lucky to have them organizing. It COVID always has changed a lot of it. Um, but there were still many ways to commemorate and celebrate the, the life of Martin Luther King Jr. So I want to thank them for once again, putting that front and center, uh, in Hamilton County and in our community. And then lastly, uh, Hoot Day to the Bengals, uh, we're super excited about the game on Saturday. I do want to remind everybody to celebrate safely. Um, you know, we, as, as has been mentioned, COVID is on the rise still in Hamilton County. While other communities such as, um, Cleveland and Columbus have either seen declining numbers or plateaued, uh, Hamilton County has not plateaued. We are still going up. And so I just want to provide a caution to people, uh, to celebrate. We all want to celebrate, but please celebrate as safely as possible and try to keep yourself and your family safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, in addition, I wanted to make one comment about, um, Port Authority, uh, just purchased about 800 homes in Price Hill. And the reason for the purchase, there were, um, landlords that were absentee and just paying, they were in disrepair. Um, just paying to have some property. And so we as a board need to keep our finger on the pulse of, uh, the Port Authority and to ensure that those homes are for the purpose of, uh, people that can't normally afford housing, um, that they are going to be placed in those houses once they're, uh, put in to repair and that some of them can buy the homes also. So when we talk about all these homes, which is absentee landlords, we know they don't particularly, uh, care a lot about the region where they have a home. But now we can have our own people, uh, in the community, uh, to purchase a home and they will help with the, um, the loans, uh, they will, the banks will help with the loans and, uh, providing rental assistance and things like that. But that's a lot of homes for us to not lose sight of. So I just ask as a, uh, as a board and also the people that are surrounding us that are in the community, uh, to make sure that that goal that they have to, um, provide more housing and more homes for people who have never had them, that that actually takes place. So, uh, Jeff Aludor, administrator.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, just a, a couple of quick comments. So, um, just as a, as a general note, um, as the board, uh, puts its policy agenda into place through the budget that is enacted every year, the administration then goes about the work of crafting an administrative work plan, uh, to implement all those items. So we met last week to put together that plan. It typically winds up being between 120, 150 items, et cetera, um, of just the, the, the work that we're going to be doing throughout the year, some of which you mentioned today. I bring it up for that reason, uh, whether it's child support amnesty or the mentorship program, et cetera. Uh, we started talking last week about timelines for putting all these things into place. So all these things are, uh, on the, on the, on the work agenda and we will be, uh, updating you, uh, frequently on, on where those items, uh, stand. Um, as it relates to, uh, some of the additional items that were discussed, Commissioner Reese, I think you brought up the, the- Commissioner Reese, I think you brought up the, the backlog and the 60-day plan. I have spoken with Director Patton about that. So they are working on a plan and we will work with the president's office on scheduling that for a Tuesday staff meeting here very shortly, whether it's this coming Tuesday or the following Tuesday. But we will present to the board what we're doing to get that backlog down. We're also, we are talking with HR on the retirees. We have, we have several areas within county operations where rehiring some people with some experience makes a lot of sense. And we're looking right now as to whether we need some board policy action on that to facilitate that and enable that to happen. So look for that within the next week or two as well. With that, I do have just one by leave today, was a late arriving by leave. So just got to your package, I think, yesterday. But this is a resolution appointing a member to the Board of Trustees for the Transportation Improvement District or the TID. And this is actually reappointing County Engineer Eric Beck. So, Madam President, I didn't know if you wanted to formally introduce this or, or make the motion, but the administration does recommend, does recommend approval.
Okay, I can make the motion for by leave one. It's a resolution appointing a member of the Board of Trustees for the Hamilton County Transportation Improvement District, Mr. Eric Beck. And so would you like to? Okay. And so you've been involved with that, you're, aren't you the chair?
I'm the secretary treasurer.
Okay, okay.
And I've been on there just about two years now, it's a two-year term.
Right, and your term ended actually January 8, 2022. So we're very happy to, to appoint you and would you like to say something?
No, I appreciate the, the confidence of the board and that the Transportation Improvement District is definitely important to Hamilton County. We continue to look at projects that impact multiple jurisdictions. So I'm, I'm happy to serve.
Thank you so much. And I just have to say aside that you have taken on that new role as director in your department as the head engineer, you've done a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So with no additional comments, I'd make a motion to adopt by leave one.
Second, Commissioner Summer Dimas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreyhouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. So we have before us, under the regular agenda. I just wanted to make a comment though, before we do that. And Jeff, you brought up some, you gave some clarity and information about what your staff is working on, which I think is, is just awesome because it shows that we're all on the same page. We're doing some forward thinking and trying to resolve some issues that we all have, have brought up and some concerns because we're, we are all very concerned about what Vice President Reese said about the backlogs and people waiting for services. And, and so you guys are already working on those things. So we certainly appreciate that and that you not only hear us, but you're listening to what we, what our priorities are. So thank you. All right, so regular agenda.
Okay, thank you. Item number one is a resolution for the 2021 Municipal Road Fund Project from the city of Mount Healthy, their improvements to Hamilton Avenue. This was a 2021 MRF project that was approved by the board back in June. This is the follow-up intergovernmental agreement with Mount Healthy to allow us to transfer $100,000 from municipal permissive auto tax fund to them.
All right, any discussion? Hearing that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item one.
Second, Commissioner Summer Dimas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreyhouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item number two is the final assessment resolution for the 2020, 2021 sidewalk program. This is for sidewalk that was inspected in 2020, was approved by the board and construction was completed in 2021. There's a list that has the property owners that had not paid. And 75% of the property owners paid on time. This is remaining 25%. There's 13 property owners. If the board approves this today, this will go on the tax bill in 2023 for these properties. The average cost with the assessment is approximately $75 per year.
Okay. Thank you. And that was going to be my question, when does it go on their tax bill?
It'll go on 2023.
So that's not, that's good that they get time to, to pay that. So any comments as it relates to the sidewalk program?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to support this today, but one of the things that I had brought up, I think, last year, this time, and I'd just gotten here and I was concerned about, you know, it seems like this COVID and comes with COVID and they're cousins, don't want to go away. And people are still, the economy, I saw where if you are billionaire, you did great. It's a billionaire made so much money, it's unbelievable. But everyone else, which is all of us and most of the people, everybody we represent, they got hit really hard and more people got hit harder than, you know, we're not talking about just people that were already, you know, poor already, but people that were, felt they were doing pretty good. And I was just concerned about, is there other ways? Or can we put a moratorium? Because I'm all about right now, moratorium on some of these fees. Because I know fees start to add up. It's like, you know, you get a cell phone, it's, oh, it's only this much and add this and add that. Next thing you know, you had $200. You're like, how did all these addups? So as people keep getting fees on other things, not necessarily this, it starts to get pretty high. So I wanted to see, I know that I talked to our administrator and he had said he talked to you and you had some possible ideas and maybe some other areas of what they do. And if we could take a look at that before we go back to do another assessment, that would be helpful, I know for myself and probably for the whole board, to see if there's something else out there that's creative, that keeps people safe, but also any particular burden on them. And just so I could get more information, because there may be a senior citizen and they say, you know, I can't afford $75 more dollars for medicine. So, because they got one fee for social security, they don't, they can't get any more money. So I know that he said you might have some good ideas for us to at least take a look at and I just wanted to bring that up. And thank you for telling him about some other potential ideas. And I'd look forward to hearing those before we move forward with anything else.
Great, thank you. And, and that's, that's a great point. And again, this is for the previously approved one. We currently have, this year's sidewalk program is in the hearing stage. So we are going to go, we'll go back and look at that. The policy that was, is currently in effect was established in 1989 and last updated in 2001. So it hasn't been looked at in a while. I think it's prudent for us to go back and look at it now and see if there are other things we can do and how we can tweak that out. I have talked to the administration about that and we'll, we'll look at that in the next couple of weeks prior to the next hearing for, for this year's sidewalk program.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
Thank you. And as we inform those that have this obligation, once we pass it, if it's passed, then we will immediately inform them of this or will they see it on their tax bill?
We will notify them, the county engineer's office will send a letter to them and notify them.
They'll have time to save up for it and all that. So, okay, thank you, Commissioner Dreyhouse.
No, I just, just to be clear, so we're likely to see this as a staff meeting agenda item, is that correct?
At some point, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, why don't we, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item number two.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreyhouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. You have before you consent agenda items, number three through 10. Are there any specific concerns or questions as it relates to any of these items?
I have not a comment.
As it relates to these items?
Yes, okay. Number five is the, I wanted to bring attention to, we have a lot of artists, art organizations in Hamilton County. And we've got a $2 million grant that would be administered by Arts Wave. And just wanted to highlight that because I know we had, you know, several artists who are in business for themselves as an artist. And they had asked many of us about, you know, when are these coming out? So I wanted to put some emphasis on that. And then also the fact that we had emphasized that we want to make sure that we're diverse and we also diverse, not only just in ethnicity, but diverse in countywide, also diverse in having some of the smaller organizations. We, we've been very, I think, clear to those who are ministering grants for us that we want everyone to have an opportunity. We want to look at this, some of the smaller organizations so they get an equal opportunity, an equal shot. So just wanted to highlight that number five on, on this consent agenda that it's out. And I'm not sure, once we pass it, when will it be rolled out?
Holly, the rollout date for this, we're looking at, you want to just give a brief overview of the timing of the program? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Yes, we're excited to partner with Arts Wave as Vice President Commissioner Reese mentioned to administer our nonprofit arts grant program, very similar to how we did under the CARES Act. And we're tentatively looking, working with Arts Wave on applications being opened towards the end of the month, right around the 31st.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for drawing attention to that item too.
Yeah, I, I had the same, I wanted to highlight number five too. And I'm, I wanted to get the timing of it so that we can make sure that the arts organizations know when to apply. So could you just put, to put a finer point on it, when that happens, could you let us know so that we can extend that out? Thank you.
I was going to ask a question too, see, we're all on the same page. Okay, thanks, Holly. No additional comments, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item three through 10.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreyhouse.
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas. Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreyhouse.
Yes.
The ball was sitting on my, hey.